Florida County Commissioners, now in session, we'll begin with prayer, followed by the pledge. Commissioner Jones, you lead some prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we come to you today in Jesus' name, thanking you for this day that you've given us, thanking you for everything that you have blessed us with today. Father, we ask today in those blessings that you have blessed and granted us as a board, God over this county, Lord discretion, understanding, and wisdom, God for everything that concerns the citizens and even those who visit this place we call home, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda would be approval of a minute.
So.
We have a second, I mean, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockless, second by Commissioner Massey, any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Ralph Roberson, Roberson and Associates, presentation of the county audit.
My name is Ralph Roberson, Roberson and Associates, and representing Vance CPA Accounting Firm. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2017 audit report. It's eighty-five pages long, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read it all to you. You, you've had a copy of it, and I hope you've had a chance to review it. I do want to hit a couple of significant issues and points in the audit report, and then Ben Vance will discuss some other significant issues. All in all, things are good. The county's total net position increased three million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars over 2016. That's a three point seven percent increase. That's, that's a healthy, healthy increase. The county's general fund revenues exceeded expenditures by a million, seventeen thousand and seventeen dollars. Also, the expenditures in the general fund were less than the budgeted amounts, so that's also a good position to be in. The county's capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation, increased two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, which represents an increase of three percent over the prior year. So, again, a good, good steady growth. Net assets can serve, over time, as a useful indicator of the government's financial position. In the case of the county, the assets exceeded liabilities by ninety-four million dollars at the end of 2017, compared to ninety-one million at the end of 2016. So then, again, movement in the right direction, good, good growth. A few non-financial events that I think are significant for the county and points to positive direction of the board and things that have been accomplished. The county received two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars in residential hazard mitigation grants. They were able to make some storm readiness improvements with that. There were several large, ongoing improvement projects at the county airport. These were all a hundred percent funded by the federal and state government. Were able to make improvements, upgrading to the airfield lighting system, designing and constructing a north-south taxiway, and rehabilitation of the existing airfield pavements, and upgrading the stormwater sewers. These are all significant items for the airport that will hopefully provide future uses and the opportunity for, for economic development. The Florida Department of Transportation provided a million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars grants through the Small County Outreach Program. This was for Mill Road and Carabelle. This grant allows for the widening and servicing of one point six miles of existing roadway and two point six five miles of new construction, beginning at the intersection of State Road Thirty. So these were all, all positive actions. In January of 2008, Franklin County began levying the one percent discretionary sales surtax for health care. The proceeds of the one percent sales tax are split between capital outlay and capital or operating expenses for the hospital. The current balance available in the health care trust fund for capital improvements is two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. In September of seventeen, there was nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in FEMA funding and twenty-five thousand dollars from an insurance settlement. The county was able to purchase lots one through six of the South Shoal subdivision, Alligator Point. This purchase will preserve the six acres as undeveloped land and will lessen the damage to the area, hopefully, in, in future storms. The county received a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar community development block grant and fifty thousand dollars in state housing and initiative partnership for ship funds. These grants were awarded to rehabilitate or replace substandard owner-occupied, single-family residences. So again, a benefit to the, to the, to the citizens of Franklin County. The two thousand, or the gross taxable value of property in Franklin County saw a steady increase of four point two six percent over the prior year. This was the third year of increasing taxable values. The millage rate remained the same, at six point three oh six five mils. The budgeted property tax proceeds were eleven million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. That was four hundred and fifty-four thousand more than the budgeted proceeds from the previous fiscal year, so another good, healthy increase in property value growth. The total, total budgeted positions for the county were a hundred and sixty-seven. That's down from a high in 2006, 2007 of a hundred and ninety-one budgeted positions. So, the county's doing a good job, I think, in managing, managing the personnel, personnel levels and, and maintaining, maintaining costs. We're available, I know there's a lot of information in this audit report, we're available at any time if any of you want a one-on-one discussion with any, any questions you may have, or you need further explanation and understanding some of this, we're available to provide that to you. At this time, I'd like to ask Ben Vance to come forward. Ben is obviously part of the audit team and the, and the lead auditor. We also have Paul Marks in here. Mark Edenfield, who works with us, couldn't be with us today, he's somewhere in the backwoods of Canada fishing this week, so he's, he's not here this week. Okay, Ben?
Thank you, Ralph. I just wanted to point out one thing that, to show you the significance of the change that you made during the year in one area, that's other post-employment benefits, that's the health insurance that's provided for retirees. You made a change during the year whereby, for employees that come to work after, I think it's October of seventeen, they'll no longer qualify for that subsidy. One of the important reasons you did that was because of the cost involved. The savings just in this first year exceeded two million dollars. And over the coming years, let's say over the next ten years, you're gonna have several other more million dollars less in liability for that retirement, retirement benefit that you give. The, I don't know if you understand it or not, but the, the number that goes on your financial statements is an estimate that's made by an actuary based on what your policy is and your employees. And sometimes they're forecasting that expense out over a fifty-year period. So just the, I just wanted to highlight, the one change that you made just in this last year reduced that liability by two billion dollars, and it's gonna continue to reduce that liability over the coming years by a very significant amount. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. One question for you. Mr. Vance?
Uh huh.
I had never met you before, I didn't know who you was, I would've said hi to you when I came in, I've never met you. If this is a problem, you're talking to us about this may potentially be a problem as far as retiring insurance. Y'all had the contract since-
No, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's not a problem. It's a good thing.
Oh, it's a good thing?
It's a good thing. You saved two million dollars this year, you're gonna save several more million dollars over the coming years.
Okay.
And the reason is, you, you reduced for new employees their benefit.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Y'all been the auditors for, since 2012, I never did know anything like this, I, I've never been aware of this.
Yeah, OPEB, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering why we haven't been told before now that we are in good shape with the retirees' insurance.
Well, you just made that change. OPEB came about in 2008, that's when it first started appearing on your financial statements, back in 2008. That first year, the liability that they put on your books was twenty-seven million dollars. Over time, as the actuaries have changed and this, that, that number's gone down as low as seven million dollars and gone back up again, it went from twenty-seven million down to seven million, then back up again at sixteen million. Now it's dropped down to fourteen million.
That's all I wanted to know.
Any other comments from the board? No further comment.
I've got one for, I've got, I've got one for Mr. Ralph. Mr. Ralph, if you don't mind. I don't know if y'all are aware, but the clerk gave us the, or told us that the audit was in at the last meeting, so y'all will know, 'cause it's, this is just kinda odd. You all know that we're opening bids for auditors today, am I, are you aware of that?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Ralph?
Mm-hmm.
Had, since the bidding process has began, and I'll go back forty-five days to sixty days, have you had any conversations at all during this bid process with any commissioner or commissioners?
We've had conversations regarding a lot of subjects. As far as the bidding process, that starts when you submit your bid and you sign the affidavit that you're not having any contact, that's what's called the dark period of the, of the bidding process. And since we have, since we signed the affidavit and since we submitted our bid, we've not had any discussions regarding the audit, the RFQ. We've had discussions regarding county business.
So you have not, you have not talked to any of the commission, any one commissioner or commissioners about anything to do with a proposed bid or anything like that?
Not since we signed the affidavit saying that we would not do that, and we submitted our RFQ.
Okay, not since you-
Which is the requirement.
Not since you've signed the affidavit.
That's, and that's the requirement. Until we submit our RFQ and we sign the affidavit, that's the requirement.
Well, and let me just say this, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Given, given what happened at the last meeting with Mr. Massey's motion to just automatically give Roberson or Roberson Associates the, to do well with the bidding process, I just am gonna make a statement, not for comment, not for any other reason, but just to make the statement, that in the past, as we do with any other professional services or services that renders to this board and answers to this board, we have always, this board has always looked unfavorably at any discussion between any of the commissioners and any vendors that may be entering a contract, and I'm just putting it out there.
Well, I certainly understand that, and we've not had, as the, as the current auditors, we obviously have discussions and relationships with the county staff and the county commission. We have not violated that rule of the RFQ. And as I, as I stated, since we submitted the RFQ and signed the affidavit, we've not had any discussion.
None of your staff had?
No. No, 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 that's simply not the case. And, and while I'm here, your, your earlier comment that, that we've not told you before that the county was in good shape, we've done that before, we've done that every year when we, when we finished the audit.
I was talking about the retirement, I was talking about the retirement.
Well, and, and the, and the OPEB discussion has come up before, when that first came up, that was a big number, and we, we talked about that then too, particularly with, you know, with commissioners and with staff. So it's not the first time this has come up, but, you know, our point today was to make the point that it's improving, that the decision that this commission made, the hard decision that this commission had to make regarding future benefits, was one that, for financial stability, needed to be made, and, and we're just simply pointing out that because you made that decision, that your financial position is improving with that. As Ben said, about two million dollars from last year to this year, so that's, that's the payoff for the, for the decision that you made, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But, no, as far as, as far as discussions, no. And we've, we've maintained a good relationship with this commission. Over the last six years that we've done the audit, we've saved this county somewhere around ninety thousand dollars over the audit fees that you were paying before, and we're using local people, working, we're creating jobs in Franklin County, and we appreciate that support, and we've had a very good relationship with the county over the last six years. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I just, you know, wanna say thank you, y'all, but I have London and Aaron here today too, and I just wanted to recognize them, because Aaron is the one that brought this insurance for retirees matter to y'all, back in, I think it was last year, Aaron, March of seventeen, which did save a lot of money. When this OPEB started back, we only had like four retirees at that time, we've got forty-something retirees now. And I, B and N Ralph pointed out that, you know, that the overall health, even though we have that OPEB liability, the overall health of the county's finances are in great shape, and I just want to give a shout out to London and Aaron, because those are the two people that are looking out for you and the rest of us constitutionals, and I, I just, they do a great job, and I don't know if y'all wanted to say anything about the audit or...
I'll leave that term.
But the other thing was, is there any recommendation from the auditors on anything else we could do because of that unfunded liability on the OPEB?
There's nothing you can really do, as far as the retirement liability, you don't have any control over that whatsoever, that's by the state of Florida. As far as the OPEB liability, you made the, you made the significant change you needed to make, and that's been talked about for several years, so I know it's, it's several years to do with that, that liability is gonna continue to go down.
Thank you, I just wanted the people that may be watching this to understand that the overall health of the county is, is great, and they point that out, so, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming in today. Next on the agenda is Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works, and real quickly, I want to deviate just a little bit. I want to tell everybody that's, all the county employees, from Solidways to our road department, to our EOC, to Robertson Roberts, to Timmy Butler, to Jason White, to the City of Tallahassee for helping us over there in East Point with this fire response. I look at a lot of TV shows, a lot of news, and there's no mention of what our county employees done for us. There's no mention of the other independent contractors, local contractors, two of them to be specific, Mr. Butler and, and Jason White, that put their equipment over there and really helped restore that little part of Franklin County over there. And I, I think it's, proved that the county commission recognized how much our employees done for us, our county staff, everybody involved. I think the cleanup over there went really well, and it's because we were well organized, everybody jumped in and done their part. Mike Cake's been doing a lot of electrical stuff over there currently, I think he has nine more power poles put up. So there's a lot of people in our community, as well as our county employees, that, that really worked hard over there, that got no recognition, and I want to make everybody aware of that, and if I've missed somebody, I'm sorry, but Highway Patrol was over there doing traffic, FWC was over there doing traffic. There's just a tremendous lot of people besides one entity that made all this come together, made it all work on behalf of the people in East Point that were burned out in the fire. So I want to recognize those people on behalf of the board, and make sure they get their due recognition. And while I got all my county supervisors here, I just want to make that statement real quick, and let y'all know we appreciate what was done. Ms. Brunel, I know you were out, Tress filled in well for you, represented you well, represented the EOC well. So I just want to put that out, our planning and building department, trying to make sure I don't miss nobody, but if I did, I apologize, but I just want everybody to know that this was a concerted effort, collaboration over a lot of different departments of the county, as well as the state, as well as the City of Tallahassee and our independent contractors here locally, that gave up their time, come off of their jobs to help these people in East Point, and I want them to be recognized accordingly. Having said that, we will, we will move on down our agenda, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, everybody worked good together, commissioners, and they were good, good truck drivers and good equipment operators too, so, we worked probably two and a half days, two long days, so, from eight o'clock around at dark, so.
And we do appreciate, the people of Franklin County appreciate it.
We just got a couple of them on the grass cutting, we continue on, and also, we started, as of yesterday, doing shoulder work. We started at Alligator Point, and we're gonna come through the county, so. And I have one more issue with somebody wanting to put a, I don't know, controlled, seminole vehicle that's traveling at Alligator Point, which Michael complained to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I got an email this morning, I made a copy of it and gave it to each of you, from Mr. Bill McMillan, I think he's here in the audience too for a P and Z matter, as a matter of fact. If you look down the second, I'll just skip to the meat of the matter here, the second paragraph down to about line eight, basically, the, the board, Alligator Point Board elected request permission to install with the assistance of Mr. Howard's department, a single lane, two-type, automatic transfer traffic, automatic traffic counter classifier on Alligator Drive, approximately a thousand miles east of Highway Ninety-Eight, County Road Three Seventy intersection. The unit comes with all the necessary hoses, installation accessories, and software to produce accurate reports for review by all parties. And I won't get too far into the email, it's just, I, I think this group is trying to determine how many cars actually use, what kind of traffic count they get down there, and I don't know. Yeah, and I, I don't know if you guys would like, Mr. McMillan, to stand up and explain further, or the email is pretty much self-explanatory.
Do we have this apparatus to install, Mike?
They do.
Okay.
They just, they just didn't want to put it on the county road without your permission.
I ain't got no problem with it.
I don't have no problem with it.
And if, if you don't mind, if they asked for Howard's assistance just to make sure, I mean, if you guys are good with that, that's all they're asking.
You have the capability of assisting them?
Yeah, well, they, they called me, and I told them I couldn't authorize that, and you know, that's brought up to the board, so.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Howard to work with Alligator Point's tax base.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? And motion carries.
That's all we have for the board at this time, so.
Any board members have something for Mr. Howard?
No, just thank y'all, we're gonna pay you back one day.
Hell with me.
We're gonna pay you back one day.
Any, any comments from the board from Mr. Howard? Thank you, Howard, keep up the good work. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Final Davis, Solidways Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have one item on my report, require board action, up to your discretion. Youth support teams funding. The youth support teams policy was established by the Board of County Commissioners in 2003 to assist youth support teams selected or invited to participate in state and national championship tournaments. Since then, there have been some concerns in reference to teams receiving the same amount of funding by the county, but not all teams traveling the same distance. Currently, sports teams selected to participate in events receive a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars a team, per team for state, and five thousand dollars per team for World Series tournaments. I would like to bring this concern to the board's attention and suggest a modification in the current policy verbiage to include mileage, mileage travel to receive funds or suggestion encouraging fundraising first, and the board match the first twenty-five hundred dollars raised for state and five thousand dollars for the national tournament.
This is a result of emails that I received along with Mr. Davis saying, some teams are traveling a hundred miles to play in a tournament, where they're getting twenty-five hundred dollars. Some teams are traveling seven hundred miles to a tournament, and they're getting twenty-five hundred dollars.
I agree.
And the inequities of that, and the email also went on to state that if we were more prudent in how we done that, maybe we could use the money to, for more infrastructure for the parks and stuff like that, so. My suggestion, Mr. Davis, was to bring this to the board, and I, I think what we would need to do is, is to send Mr. Davis back and have him come with recommendations to the board to changes to the policy, and bring it back to us at a future meeting. I think all the tournaments are over right now, Mr. Davis, right?
That's correct.
So everybody got what they were supposed to get this year according to policy, and in order to change that, Mr. Davis feels like we need to change our policy, because the board, he, he's following the board's lead on this, and that was kind of the policy we had, but there's been complaints about it, so.
Well, and, and I, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me just a minute, I can understand where it's coming from, 'cause this was made in 2003, and we didn't have but like one or two teams at that time that was even thinking about going to state, let alone World Series.
Correct.
So, you know, I'm gonna make a motion that we direct Mr. Davis to go and work up a policy and bring it back to us for consideration, and that'll be my motion, on the, on the, that's on the monies and the travel and stuff.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I want, well, see what happened was, this, they can't make the county commission the bad guy, we done what they asked us. I mean, they kind of, they put in a proposal back then in 2002, said that's what they wanted, and that's what they got, and they ain't never come back and changed it, and now they act like we doing it. It should've been up to the, the people of the league who ever opened it. If they seen it was a problem, they should've been brought this to us, but they bringing it to us now, but they been fussing all over the internet and everywhere else, saying this isn't getting that, this isn't getting that, bring it to us, and tell us, you know, we want to modify this stuff. And that's all they had to do, and we, we took it.
We do have a motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Just to let you all know, we received at the landfill roughly about fifteen hundred tons from the East Point Fire that was brought into the landfill, and then after we get the metal hauled out, then I can tell you what actually was disposed of.
Okay. Oh, but, can I? Sure.
By the way, who won the ballgame to the state?
Yeah, we, we got it put out.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
I know, oh, that one.
Any other discussion for Mr. Davis and the board members? Any, any others?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Final, thank for coming in today.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda would be Ms. Pam Brunel.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, before she does her, before she does her report, Pam, I hope you got good news, and I'm glad you're back.
Well, I haven't heard anything.
No news is good news.
That's the way I look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have an action item that we're really gonna need to strike that. Michael Schuler is still working on that contract between the MOU and county on the availability of that building that we're using to store stuff for the fire victims. So that will come up in front of you at a later date when we hash out all of that. The other thing I would like to do, I would like to publicly thank my staff, Tress Damaron and Jeannie Daniels, while I was out and before I was out, this staff worked long hours, way into the morning- Uh, this staff worked long hours way into the morning, and it's still working. I mean, because you don't see us out there every day on the street. We spent all day yesterday going over these lists, trying to make sure that we did not miss anyone in, as far as being a victim of this fire. Uh, Franklin's Promise, same thing with them, they are a volunteer agency. They have helped us immensely with, uh, getting stuff out, getting, um, getting these lists. Uh, we, uh, contacted a plumber yesterday about, uh, water and sewage. We're trying to get everything in place so when, um, those travel trailers are available to be turned over, that we can just move those travel trailers to that location, get it hooked up, and, um, have everything ready for them. So we're, that's, that's what we're working on right now, is power coals and now sewage hookup. Because those two things you've got to have before you can put someone in a home.
Y'all done an excellent job.
Well, thank you. Uh, again, um, I think the commissioner sort of addressed, I gave y'all all a, the latest and greatest misinformation on Facebook this morning. Uh, I have, uh, got a voicemail, I noticed while ago, from that same reporter that put this misinformation out, wanting to talk to us. Uh, I will get with Amy and all these things that, you know, she's implied that the county, uh, was at fault for. I want a good understanding when I talk to her. Are we talking about our travel trailers, which I don't think we're talking, I think we're talking about the mobile homes that the trailer bought for the fire victim? That was not expressed in this.
Yes, uh, somebody needs to clarify something.
Let, let me clarify. Okay, so, there is a world of misinformation. Here, here's the deal, commissioners, as we all know, we have to treat the permanent five trailers that the sheriff is buying, we have to treat them like anybody walking in on, off the street wanting to put a permanent home there. That requires elevation certificate, it requires a survey. We can't get around that. That's not the county's rule, that's just, that's the state, that's federal, there's no way around that. The travel trailers do not require this, and I don't know how they, all this, that's not true, I do know, but it's, 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 it's two separate things, okay? Like Pam just explained, real clear, the, the travel trailers are just, we just need the power, water and sewage, that's it, that's all. They're temporary, they're gonna be moved at some point. But if you're gonna put a permanent home, then we have to do that the right way. There's no getting around that. We all know, all five of you know what happens when we don't do it the right way the first time, okay? So does the attorney. We all know how that works out, not, not a good thing. We have to do it the right way when it comes to the permanent homes. And I, I, I stand here in case you guys have questions.
I do.
I'll get Amy if I have to.
So we have this fund, Franklin's Promise Fund, can they not help these people get these certificates, help them fund the, getting this certificate?
Yes, and there's a cost, that, and that cost comes from the, the surveyor. With the, the survey, whoever's doing the survey, they have to provide that certificate, and I'm sure there's gonna be a cost. But yes, we can do that from that cost. It would have been helpful if, when we were approached about the permanent homes, we could have explained if some money could have been left behind from that fund to pay for it, but nevertheless, that's in the past, we're here where we are now, and yes, we can use the Franklin Promise funds to pay some of these, uh...
We only got five, right?
Yeah, that's five.
So those people are gonna need help getting this elevation certificate?
And if we can get, like, like Pam is, like her department is doing, Pam and, uh, her staff, if we can get one person to do all, then we probably get a better price.
Okay, so y'all working on that?
Yes, yes.
So we don't get blasted in the media the way we're being blasted here today?
Yes.
I make a motion.
That's been every day.
I make a motion that, um, they go out, use some fund for the, from the Franklin Promise, and they don't, I don't get to get no more in the, I don't know, but, uh, use the Franklin Promise as part of the money, let, use that to get, for the people.
For the permanent home.
Permanent home.
Yes, sir.
Now, for the TBA, I want to also put in this motion that bring that lady down here. Pam, you let Michael handle that. Michael, what you do, what you do, if you go to them books in there and let her read what you, what, what they have to do for permanent and non-permanent, and that'll start some of that. That's my motion.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Massing. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I got something. In the middle of all this stuff, and I think it is the, you know, there, there is a difference, and again, with what Mr. Maron was stating, we're just trying to do everything the right way.
Right.
We're not telling people to wait longer. This board hasn't taken a stance of we don't care. I think it's exactly the opposite, uh, because like I told someone this morning, they said, well, that makes it completely different. I said, the stance this board is taking is okay, yeah, there might be permanent mobile homes, but we're not just gonna wheel them in there and plop them down and say, okay, you got better than what you had to deal with. No, we're trying to do everything the right way. It needs to be done decently and order, and that's all we're trying to do. I understand it might be taking longer for some than they think it needs to and cause heartburn, but, you know, there are pills for heartburns, so you need to get with that, so, anyway.
Really, and truly, these permanent mobile home, uh, permanent housing that was purchased, probably should have come to county staff and say, what is going to be required? And we would not be here where we're at today instead of just basically doing what you want to do, you gotta follow county policy, you gotta follow state and federal law. So that's what we have to do, and if, if it takes a little bit longer to do that, I'm sorry, but that's what we have to do as a government. I mean, we waived all the fees we can waive, we've done this, we've done that, but some things, we're not, we don't have the ability, the capability to waive and just do away with. We have to follow FEMA rules, we have to follow federal and state guidelines. You take a oath when you take this office to uphold the constitution of the fed and the state and your local. So I mean, it's just what we have to do as a board, and we're gonna do that, we'll try to do it, uh, as quickly as we can, but it has to be done, and, and as Commissioner Jones says, that's just, just the role that we play here and, and the policies and procedures that we have to put forth, and we have to follow those policies and procedures.
And, and let me just relate something. If we all knew what the right hand was doing, we'd be better off. You know, the left hand needs to know what the right hand's doing and all that.
Amen.
But if you, it, but if you look at the, the scheme of things, Alligator Point had been waived since two thousand and sixteen for FEMA, not nobody else but FEMA, to get off of what they were going to offer. They first said thousand foot, uh, thousand linear foot, then they said two hundred and fifty foot, now we finally got them back to a thousand foot, 'cause we know that two hundred and fifty won't do. This is the same situation here. We are doing everything that we can in the scope of our ability and jurisdiction, don't you believe, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and this is all we can do. And you know, we, I, I want to say this, we all are family, family, we all are from Franklin County, and one is not doing any more than what the other. When you have a tragedy, when you have a disaster in this county, there's nothing about me, 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 it's about them. You see what I'm saying? So it's not all about what you do, it's about what we do to help the people. Because the people is what puts you in, and the people is what can take you out. And the number one thing in my book has always been people, and it's about the people. But somewhere along the line, the lines of communication apparently have been misdirected or broken or something, because I don't know what happened to this all come together in one room and everybody knows what everybody's doing, instead of this one going here, that one going there, and the other one going there. We've always been one that brings everything together under one roof, and then everybody knows what they're doing. So, I mean, I'm just saying, that, that's where it needs to go. And I can tell you that if we have a storm this year, that's the way it needs to go.
Oh, Commissioner, that's how y'all have your structure set up.
Aha.
And we handed out those charts, uh, you know, when a, when something happens in this county as far as a disaster, the board's at the top, my office is underneath y'all, and then from that, it branches out the two municipalities, and then underneath that falls law enforcement, fire, health. It, it's all structured out, and that is the structure that the federal government says we have to comply by.
I know, I know, but I just want to say, if we can get the people, and, and you know, at our last meeting, commissioners, if y'all remember, uh, Jennifer and Tress was here, we said if we can get these people set up within six months, all of them within six months, we're gonna be doing good, and we are, you know, and that's the way it is. But there's some, it's like Mr. Maron said, there is some things that you can't get past as far as the flood, the elevation and all that, you cannot get past that. I mean, we can waive all the permits we want to at the local level and not require this and that and the other, but when it comes to the elevation and the flood and all, we cannot do that, unless, unless we contact the state government and they said we don't have to do it, so. I mean, I never have seen anything come down from Governor Scott as far as an executive order dealing with the East Point Fire, so, so far, it's, it's nothing so far. But anyway, I just wanted to say that.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Um, I have one other thing that come across my desk this morning. Uh, we have been invited by the same WTXL dot, uh, re, uh, station that put out the wrong information to attend a, um, phone bank to offer the support to fire victims on Wednesday, July the nineteenth. Uh, now, uh, if one of our elected officials such as one of the commissioners would like to be in on that call, they will send you, uh, provide you a number so you could call in to give your statement. Uh, other than that, we have to travel to, uh, Midway for this, and yes, my staff will be there. Um, I'd like to, um, suggest to the board that let me contact all of our surrounding news media and do a, um, press conference so we can get this straightened out, and, um, they realize that, you know, yes, this county is working for its residents in this county, and everybody has worked really, really, really hard. Even though, you know, I was laid up with kidney surgery, my girl still kept me in for them, and they did a wonderful job.
I know, I've been over there several, several, several times, I've worked, I've done, I was over tonight with y'all. I can't live over there 'cause I have to work. The sheriff department gets paid to be there. They don't call to guard them people, like y'all, y'all get paid to be there. Me, the, the commissioners has to work too. We can't stay over five, seven days a week, twenty-four hours around the clock, but I've been there numerous hours, over all day yesterday evening on the flood thing here was going on. You know, like Mr. Boom, I ain't seen him, I've been all over there. I don't know who he is, I've never met him, but I've been all over.
Well, with y'all's permission, I'd like to, uh, work with Michael and get a press conference set up for y'all, and it can either be all of y'all or one of y'all, however you want to do it, to set up and, and let's get it straight, let's get it out there.
Yeah.
We got budget on the night.
Or Wednesday we don't, she said that was on Wednesday.
This is on Wednesday, and it's from four-thirty to six-thirty.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yes, yes.
It's not, it's not.
I, I think that was Thursday.
It's Thursday.
We got budget here on Thursday and Friday.
This is when, what's on here is Wednesday, July the nineteenth.
Yeah, our date.
But it is tomorrow, I do believe, whatever date that is, but I will confirm that, but either way, if, uh, one of y'all or all of y'all want to be in, in on it, let me know so I can get a contact number for you. But, uh, with y'all's approval, do y'all want me to set up a, 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 a media?
Yes, indeed.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion, you set it up, all of us can be there.
Okay, I would like to really have it, uh, in here if possible.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of procedure, we can have one commissioner on that phone conference, we can't have all five of you, you can have one of you. Who y'all wants up to y'all, we can't have all five of you meeting in a non-public setting in that fashion, sorry.
Well, I, I, I mean, can you add in your motion to put the district commission in there?
There you go.
Or the chairman, or whichever y'all choose, I mean, yeah. I mean, the man, the, the district commission should be in, that's his district.
I'm taking it, y'all.
So that'd be Commissioner Massing?
Yep.
I don't know, it's split.
No, it's not split, it's his district.
It's his district, yeah.
We have a motion.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
It's either gonna be the chairman or we.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
Now, is this for the call-in?
Yep.
Yes, this is for the call-in for the phone bank. I would like to set up a separate...
Obviously, we can't have, whether it's one thing or the other, Mike, we can't, we can only have one commissioner, we can't have more than one, can't have two or more commissioners either at the phone conference or meeting.
Or a press conference.
Yeah, to pull, to do a press conference, to bring all our surrounding media in, uh...
Why don't you just call a press conference here?
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, this, this other is a, is like a phone, it's like a phone bank.
That's a fundraiser.
Fundraiser.
Uh-huh, I know.
But they're giving the commissioner, um, or giving the commission opportunity that if you want to call in and give a statement, you can't.
Can they call it separately?
Please, please, the board, I'll take priority in the phone bank.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Commissioner Massing should take part in the conference, now somebody needs to make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, yeah. What's that mean?
Okay, I will.
We got, how many motions we got on the floor now? We never have voted on the first one, have we?
My recommendation would be for Commissioner Lockley to withdraw, uh, his motion for everyone, and then we'll just go with the motion, the second, from, uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
And then we have the motion.
Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Lockley withdrew on his motion, and we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, which motion, this or we got, no?
I'll, I'll participate in the phone bank, you participate in the con, the, uh...
The com.
Conference.
Okay, Commissioner Jeannie just told me that she's got the correction on it, it is Thursday, the nineteenth, from four-thirty to six-thirty.
Four-thirty, nineteen.
We'll be through.
Okay, all right. Then I'll get you the number for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Massing will be part of your...
For the, uh, media.
That's correct.
Yeah, we'll get that set up.
Do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, sir.
There being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
You'll let me know when it is?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'll work with Michael, and we'll go through, 'cause we have a list, but of course, you know, reporters change at the newspaper, I mean, at those stations, you may have one that you've been working with, and the next one you get, she's already gone, goes somewhere else, but we will contact them.
Yeah, they was out there yesterday, Pam, out there on Wilmer's Ridge Road, a news reporter running around saying that we was making them get all the surveys, and she had a group of people swarmed up.
That's the one that she just gave.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner, I will make sure that, uh, I inform them that, uh, they should come to my office first.
Exactly.
You're in my county, you need to come to my office first.
Well, we have a public information officer too, you, you delegated that.
Yep, that's me and Tress and Jeannie.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, we've got a public information officer, and that's where it's supposed to be right at, sir.
Your, your breakdown is chain of command, not that the county not being recognized is chain of command, that's your breakdown.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, you know, it's the case of too many chiefs and not enough Indians, and that's it. I mean, everybody wants to be the chief, but nobody wants to get out there and do it, so, anyway, we're gonna do it.
Anything else, Ms. Pam?
That's it, sir.
And the board? Any other comments from the board members? Thank you for coming in today.
Okay, so under, Commissioner, if you notice, under Pam, I have a little bullet point and I have, um, Deborah before, I'm sorry, before you guys leave, I'm sorry. Um, Deborah is here to talk about the CDBG funding as it applies to the, the, the event, the fire event. So I just wanted her to be here in case Tress, she had questions for Tress, Pam, whomever.
Come forward, Ms. Bel- Ms. Belcher, you're next on the agenda.
Thank you for the opportunity to be part of your team, um, addressing the East Point Fire, um, and acknowledge the hard work of, of emergency management and Joe Taylor and all the other people that have volunteered times through organizations, churches, whatever, in addition to staff, um, and contractors and everybody. So, um, two things I have been working on, the first, uh, you, I think you have seen the letter that I prepared for Chairman Parrish to sign previously to request a grant modification, um, that went in, and as a follow-up, there is a second letter, um, that I emailed to you. The DEO staff actually worked with their DEO attorneys to prepare this letter, um, that would be the petition for waiver of the rule. Basically, what this is, is this is the legal process for the state to waive the limit on how much money you can get in your CDBG. Um, now, there's a dollar amount in there that I just inserted last night, um, and I'm gonna change Swanee to Franklin County. Um, again, DEO staff worked to prepare this letter, so I don't know where Swanee came from, but, um, this is the, um, the dollar amount. I gave you a, a little spreadsheet that shows how I came up with that dollar amount. And what we're asking for is a revised amount for the grant, which includes the original seven hundred thousand dollars. So in other words, we're asking for the state to waive the limit for the grant to be up to this new amount. Okay, I've got, I have, I am, um... I did email that to, so, to all of them, but, okay. So, um, the amount that we're asking the state, um, to revise up to is based on information I've gathered from all the hard-working people, uh, in the field who've identified, um, victims and also I've done some work to try to match up names with what the property appraiser says. There are people who say they own homes and according to the property appraiser, they don't. Um, so in my experience, through a lot of years of this, sometimes you'll get people who'll say they own something, in reality, it was their parents' home or their grandparents' home or whatever and, you know, they're gone and they think they own it, but they really don't legally, so we'll, we can deal with those things later. Um, those, those issues don't need to be, uh, resolved right now for us to ask for the waiver. This is all things we can work on, um, quickly after, after this is approved. But what we need to do is, I guess, uh, Mr. Marone felt it was appropriate for the board to ratify the letter that was already submitted and then also to authorize the chairman to request this waiver.
Real quick, the letter I signed, uh, instead of closing out our grant that we have this year, they wanted that letter to request the grant remain open.
Re-open, actually.
Re-open.
Remain open.
In order to get this funding that you're seeing out before you, so that's the ratification she's asking for. Could I get a motion and a second from the board?
Samu.
Sir.
We have a motion, Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Now, what's the next step?
Uh, authorize the chairman to submit a, uh, petition for waiver from Rule seventy-three C dash twenty-one, um, to request supplemental funding for the East Point Fire.
Samu.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. And you want me to sign this document or you have another document that needs to be signed?
Well, it needs to be printed on your letterhead and, and we'll, we'll correct this one, one county here. Yeah, and I've already emailed, I actually emailed it to all of you last evening along with the documentation on how I came up with the number. Um, and also, I want to make sure everybody understands that I mailed it to emergency management and Joe Taylor and people like that, so people are all understanding, because I've been informing them along the way so we can work as a team.
Absolutely.
And, and, because there are people who really, the CDBG program, you know, it's gonna be limited, uh, some things and, uh, sometimes the pots of money that are raised by donations, they don't have the strings that CDBG does, so it's good to know who might be best served with which funding. And so that was the, one of the, one of the many reasons we have to work as a team.
Let me ask you a question. Now, this, this is down the road, right? This is long-term down the road?
This is permanent housing, yes.
But it gonna be down, permanent down the road, huh?
Permanent, but not, we hope not very far down the road.
Yeah, that's the reason they had to extend the current grant cycle.
Right, and, and the fact, and that was, uh, I thought, a very, um, um, smart move on, on the DEO staff's part, um, to recommend that, because there's some of the environmental work we don't have to do over again. Um, you had expressed that you wanted me to handle this so the consultant procurement doesn't have to be done all over again, so those steps alone are saving some months of time. And then, um, there are a couple of things that I can do that I've thought of that normally aren't done in the environmental. We have to actually do an environmental for every single site, but for example, I'm gonna do a blanket tribal consultation, uh, process, put all of them, the whole zone in one thing, we can't avoid that process, but I can fast-track it as best I can, so I can be doing things simultaneously.
I just want the people to know it ain't gonna happen overnight.
Correct, correct. We'll have to go through a, a procurement process for either mobile homes or construction or whatever we decide to do. I do want to also, in addition to what we just discussed, I want to bring to your attention the fact that there are rental properties, uh, involved. Um, there, there are some, I've, I've identi- I've called rentals that maybe we can call them owners, uh, people who owned a mobile home, but not the lot that it was placed on, um, there may be advantages for us to, uh, later as we get into this, to give them a mobile home and say, we're giving you this, but you have to put it on property, uh, if you didn't own property to begin with, that, you know, we'll have to do things case by case. But, um, there are some prop- several, um, homes that were destroyed, um, that were not owner-occupied and because of the lack of affordable housing in Franklin County to replace these, I'm recommending to you that, um, not today, but we modify the county's housing policy for CDBG funds for this project only to include rental housing. And the owners are not obligated to participate, but we could do replacement funding with the agreement of the owner to restrict the rent amount and, um, also for the income of the tenants. And this would more than likely have to be a fifteen-year agreement, because the, um, the issues for rentals are a little different than they are for homeowners, but, um, it would obligate the, um, the property owner, uh, similar to what's called the home program. It's, it's a, it's a program that HUD has for individual, uh, homes.
Like, like Section Eight?
It's similar. The Section Eight is based on the actual income of the tenant, it's what sets their rent. The home program says if you have a three-bedroom, um, home in this county, your rent cannot be more than X number of dollars. So it's, it doesn't fluctuate exactly with the tenant's income, but there is a limit and that's a maximum.
That helps with the criticism of us basically giving landlords, uh, units...
To rent.
To rent. I, I think that's what she, she...
I understand all that, but we don't need to deal into this today.
Yeah.
We need to move on.
Right, but I want you to be aware that in the, uh, dollar amounts that we have here, I went ahead and included it, you can always deal with it later, but we need to ask for the amount, so I said, well, let's ask for what we can support at this stage.
Okay.
I do have a, a question.
Okay.
That, that affects everybody. So let me understand, so the, the old, the old grant we reopened, it's open for two years?
It is not open now, but if this goes through, we're, I'm saying two years, it could be longer than that, but we're just saying two years.
Okay, let me ask a question. So what about everybody that was thinking they were gonna be on the waiting list for replace units, to replace their unit, whatever, for the new grant cycle? What, what, what happens to them?
They are not included, because this, this reopening is only for this East Point Zone. Now, I'm not saying it'll take two years, I'm just saying that that's how long we have, so if we can close it out earlier and reapply, then...
As long as this is open, we can't help anybody that thought they were gonna be helped.
Correct.
I want to make sure the board understands that.
And so this is to address, there's issues of homelessness involved here and the board already voted at the last meeting that I attended that even if the s- the regular application that would go in, which we can't do if we get this, but we went ahead and authorized the other application just in case this doesn't go through. So, um, the board already voted that that grant would be reserved for the East Point Fire area. So this is not in contradiction with what you've already voted on.
The board did that hoping to leverage more dollars, which is what we're talking about here this morning.
I'm, I'm sorry, so, one more, how much? Okay, you know, we're reopening that grant if it works out. Does ship have to put back in money again, or since we'd already done that the first time, we, we don't?
We took the ship leverage out of the last grant, because, um, we only worked on mobile homes.
Yes.
Um, we will have to put fifty thousand dollars in here, because we have to keep the application score of the original grant within the funding range. And because we're gonna increase the cost per unit average, our score drops on that factor, so we have to put the leverage back in. We can deal with that. We can deal with that based on non-county funds, I think. Um, I, I have some ideas already in mind about that, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue at all.
We discussed at the last board meeting, if you put it in, you gotta spend it.
Yes.
You can't put it in to get...
And that's for the next...
To raise the grant points up and then take the money back out.
Yeah.
So we discussed all that. So that has to stay in.
Right, and that is, and, and we talked about that for the next grant.
That's correct.
But for this grant, um, we will have to put the fifty thousand back in, but I, I think we can take it from, I hope we can take it from something other than ship and I, I have, um, a couple of ideas in mind on that.
Have we voted on this item? There's no motion open, right? We took care of that. We do appreciate you coming in this morning, keep working hard for us and we need to move on down the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestreet.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't have any items requiring action from the board today, but I just did want to highlight our outstanding four-H summer camp season this year. We had, um, a cluster of counties camping together with us during our week, so we had Franklin, Wakulla, Gulf and Bay County over in Niceville on Choctawatch Bay, and we had more youth there than any of the other counties. We had forty-two youth that traveled over to Camp Timpoochie and spent a week over there for summer camp this year, and that's just really an outstanding opportunity for those kids that were able to go. And that was made possible by a lot of donations through the community that provided support for that, because a lot of those youth would not attend summer camp if they had to pay the full rate that it takes to cover the costs for them to be there. So that's just a really great improvement each year. And I'm thinking that, um, one issue that we're having now with that number of youth wanting to attend camp is transportation and getting them over there. We've been sharing transportation with a couple of the other counties and having our youth meet them at their location to ride over on their buses and space, just, we exceeded that space this year and had to make some last-minute adjustments to try to get everybody over there. Um, I'm thinking I would like to start a conversation with the district superintendent, Ms. Moses, to talk about possible support for a school bus to be able to come from our county that takes youth over there during the camp session. That's what these other counties have been doing and we were able to take some of their seats this year to get everybody over there. But with that number of youth, that's, that would fill up a bus with all of their gear to get them to the camp, so we can work on that and some discussions possibly for our next season, next summer.
Any comments from the board, Mr. Eric, this morning? Be no comments, thank you for coming in, Eric.
Thank you, commissioners.
You both did good work. Next on the agenda would be Ms. Lisa Lance, library director.
Um, I have no action items this morning, just want to highlight and share, uh, some of our final summer reading, uh, weekly events that we have. We've had a lot of activity going on, uh, throughout the county and with the East Point Fire, but we've got some fun, interactive and informative things going on this week. This is our final week, um, for the children's program, Rockers and Readers will meet, uh, Wednesday at eleven o'clock, uh, at the East Point for ages K through six, and in Carabelle on Friday, uh, the twentieth at eleven o'clock, and they will still be building fun things, um, that they can, uh, play with. Um, we also have our final, uh, performance, uh, which is a great one, it's entertaining. Every year we have animal tales coming again. Uh, this year's theme is Born to be Wild. They have new animals to the program and each of the animal has some connection to a unique noise or sound, so it goes along with our theme of Libraries Rock. Um, today at one-thirty, we have, um, our monthly adult gardening program and it's, uh, about birds and butterflies. Next month, uh, we will have, uh, Les Back for another gardening program and it's about pest problems, and that's the brash bugs and wicked weeds, and we have a lot of bugs around, so I'm sure he's gonna have a lot to discuss for that. Um, this Friday at East Point at one-thirty, we will have, um, uh, our basics, Basics of Better Living program, and that one is an important one, it's very informative, um, it's about avoiding scams and fraud. And in our day and age that we have with the internet and social media, um, there's a lot of, uh, elderly that are caught in scams, so this is gonna give them information to how to avoid those. Um, we do have a special event on August second, um, and it will be at East Point at eleven o'clock and Carabelle at four o'clock, and that's gonna be our Libraries Rock Back to School Party and Scavenger Hunt. Uh, the kids will find fourteen clues, they will spell out a mystery word, and at each clue, they're gonna probably be finding something for school that's gonna be helpful for them for this next academic year. Um, that is for ages K through eight. We do ask that the younger children, uh, may need adult assistance with that, but it will be a fun afternoon and a fun morning, and that again is on August second. Uh, we will be taking a break through most of August. Uh, we've had a busy summer so far, so we will be taking a break, uh, through the month of August. We will start our, uh, kids programs back up in September. Um, we do have, our branches are both still operating for nine to five, Monday, Monday through Friday, and on Saturday, ten to two, um, and this week we are, uh, conducting the interviews for our positions that are available. I don't have anything else.
I have something for us, sir. On your, uh, hiring process you fixing to do?
Yes.
That, uh, libraries in my district, we got several local people to put in for the job.
Yes.
And I want a local hire, not an outsider.
Yes, sir, yes. We, we've had twenty-one people, um, apply.
Yeah, I know, I know what you got and I seen...
From here, here to beyond.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments from Ms. Lisa this morning? Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Jason Puckett.
Mr. Puckett is not here, sir. He emailed me last night and said unfortunately he couldn't make it this morning for some flight connection issues. Thank, but I'm passing out a quick report he has, if you have any questions, uh, I can have him call you. The most important thing in the report is that he will be attending an FAA site visit at the airport on July thirty-first. Pass down enough?
I think so.
On this, uh, last paragraph, did you bring that up?
The Centric?
Yes.
Um, he wanted me to mention that Centric is doing an incredible job and he'd like to discuss at some point with the board a long, a longer-term extension to their lease. They continue to make improvements to the county-owned facilities out there at the airport, and a longer-term lease would help them be assured of a return on their investments. There, there, there are a lot going on, there really is, going on out there.
Uh, when it, whenever, when it comes to looking at long-term leases and stuff like that, I would say make a recommendation and bring it back to the board and see what he's talking about.
Okay.
When it, yeah, sounds good to me. When Centric's lease up?
Yeah, right, left.
You done, Mike?
No, ma'am.
This was a five-year lease, is my recollection, and they've been out there, what, two years?
Two years, so, I mean, wouldn't you do that, though, if it was closer to the time to go up for lease again, or?
I think what he's trying to do, commissioners, is find a way to encourage them to invest more and do more, so if, if at this point, they get a couple, a few more years on it, then he thinks they'll invest more in the facilities.
In the upgrades, yeah.
Yes, in the upgrades that's being done out there.
Because whatever they upgrade, if they leave, it stays where it began, so... Because whatever they upgrade, if they leave, it stays where it began. You can kind of see the point.
Well, let me just say this. And, I mean, I, it might not mean nothing. But, they need to invest anyway, because we gave them a contract for five years. So, they do need to invest. Whether they got an extension on it or not, they still need to invest.
They've done a lot. They have. They've done a lot.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they've been doing it, but I think they won't do.
Yeah. They, they have some bigger plans. They would like to, at least.
I want to see them invest a bigger check to the county.
That's their part of negotiating, there, there you go.
Do you want, do we need to make a motion that you?
I'll just direct. I'll, I'll call Jason and tell him that you guys recommended he goes, goes ahead with a recommendation and bring it back when he comes front of the board again.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, that lease, as with your other long-term leases, they all have a six-month termination for convenience. So, I mean, it could be a hundred-year lease on paper, but it really, it's a six-month lease. That's, that's all they ever are.
Next on the agenda would be public comment. Attorney Schuler, you want to address the memo you sent out to us today before we begin this public comment period?
I, I will, yes.
Questions that were sent to me that I asked you to respond to?
Yeah.
Yes, I had, that's your direction. I have prepared a public comment policy for your consideration. My, my plan had been to give it to you today, to let the board think about it, and then we would address it at the next board meeting. Essentially, it's, it's just a first draft that I have put together, which is reducing the written form, what we've been doing in terms of public comment. I'm, I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into, Mr. Chairman.
Just read it, and then we'll, we'll direct the board to consider it and come back with any other recommendations between now and the next meeting.
All right. The agenda is to be completed by Thursday afternoon preceding the next meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, including all reports of the department heads, county coordinator and county attorney. A notation should be added to the agenda and to the website stating that the public is invited to comment on the items on the agenda during the public comment portion of the agenda. This agenda will then be posted to the website the Friday before the next board meeting. After the agenda is posted the Friday before the next board meeting, any non-emergency matters brought up during the meeting live, like we're doing today, either by the public or the board, then the board should do one of two things. My recommended option is that the board take no action on that non-agenda matter and place it on a future agenda for consideration, much like you do for the matters brought up under commissioner comment. Another option, obviously, for the board is to take action on this non-agenda matter and then call for public comment before taking board action. If the board wants to take action on a non-agenda item that's brought up live during the meeting, your first action would be a motion to amend the agenda. The second motion would be to take action on the matter as the board deems correct. But, of course, you would call for public comment before you take action. If we have an emergency action item that's not on the agenda, which cannot be deferred, then after discussion by the board, call for public comment or taking action. And, obviously, you would also have to have a motion to amend the agenda. And, during public hearings such as like the 11 o'clock ordinance that we're going to have the board consider this morning, there's, you always call for public comment during those public hearings. One other thing that is not on this first draft of the policy is probably you should, then what I've seen done at other meetings around the state is before you go to your department head, a portion of your meetings is have public comment first and then do your department head comments after that.
And, right now, we got it scheduled after the department head, but we should have put it in between there?
I think after you open the meeting, the way I've seen this operated at other meetings around the state is public comment is first, everything else is after that. That, that kind of makes more sense to me than what we've been doing, because what if someone wants to comment on the department head report?
Okay. And, and one comment that I have is, is kind of like with, what's a gentleman come in and wanted to buy the land and wasn't on the agenda, and Commissioner Lockey made a motion to put him on the next agenda?
Right. That's what we did then. That's correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's what we've kind of been doing anyways, but.
This puts it in a written form.
Putting it in a written form and making sure everybody's aware of the policy. As far as the department head's reports, county coordinator, county attorney's reports, I've always requested that they be to me about Friday, so I have time to read over this stuff over the weekend. And, if you've got anything you need to deal with, you got Monday to deal with it before the board meeting on Tuesday. So, that's not really something that is out of the ordinary of what we've always requested. Sometimes it don't work out that way, especially when you've got disasters striking and everything else. But, that is the intent, and that's the way I like it. And, hopefully, it will be, be beneficial for the public to be able to have that information early enough to where they can look at their agenda and then during the public comment period, they can comment on this stuff before board action is taken. And, that's kind of the way we're going here. So, the board members would like to read over this and consider if there's anything else you want to have put into it, whether you're in favor or not in favor of this policy. And, we'll deal with it at the next board meeting and make it a permanent policy. Calling now for public comment. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Sarah Hines. I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin and Gulf Counties. I have two of my public health leaders here. Emerald Larkin, she's our RN, and this is DT Simmons. And, they're gonna talk today. We're here to really just talk about an upcoming outreach event that we put together. But, just in light of the East Point Fire conversation, I just really wanted to say how appreciative I am, as well as my staff, to work in this community and to serve all the families. The community came together, and I believe the most efficient and effective way possible, to support all the, all the families impacted. And, I think that's because we do have a strong local government, a strong EOC. Those ladies are amazing. Strong Sheriff's Department and community partners. We've been working behind the scenes, and we continue to support residents under the direction of the EOC. So, I just wanted to make mention of that. DT, you want to talk about the event?
Good morning, commissioners, residents, and friends. It's really an honor to be with you today. As Sarah's already mentioned, Florida Health Day is an event that the Florida Department of Health right here in Franklin County is hosting. This is a free event, and it's gonna be fun for the whole family to enjoy. The premise of Florida Health Day is to really create this one-stop-shop type of experience for our residents to learn more about the department, but also gets an opportunity to see people and meet the faces of public health in this community. We want to educate our community on the available services and resources here to help our community live longer, live stronger, and just generally better, healthier lives. Emerald is gonna tell you just a little bit about some of the interactive booths that you can expect at Florida Health Day.
Good morning. Each program from the Department of Health will have interactive booths set up with free educational materials and giveaways. The residents will have an opportunity to learn more about each of the programs that we offer in our local health department. Some of those programs include the very clinic that I work in, environmental health, tobacco prevention and cessation, women, infants, and children, also known as WIC, preparedness, choices, closing the gap, healthy families, healthy start, and many more.
In addition to those booths, we are also going to offer onsite free health screening at Florida Health Day. Now, if you're wondering where this is located, I know most of you commissioners have already seen the flyer. But, for everyone else, Florida Health Day is going to take place next Friday, July 27th, starting at 11 o'clock on the grounds of the ABC School on 12th Street in Appalachia Cola, Florida. We look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank y'all for coming in today.
Thank you.
Public comment. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens Franklin County. I have a Florida Attorney General Advisory Opinion from April 2014. I'm only gonna read one sentence. Members of the public in 286.000114 subsection 2, members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board or commission. My question is why are, Mr. Chairman, why are our meetings more closed than neighboring counties? Time of day, difficulty in speaking on a specific issue? Why do we not make our meetings as open as humanly possible, rather than restricting them to a standard, the lowest possible legal standard? That's my, that's my question to you, sir.
Oh, okay. Is that the end of your comment?
That's the end of my comment.
Any other public comment? Come forward, state your name for the record. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Welton Cadwell, Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. Before I talk to you about what I want to talk to you about, there's a couple of comments I'd like to make. Number one, Commissioner Lockey, in politics, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. I don't know any county, your size or any other size, that commits as much as you do to your youth and their ball teams. I, I, it's almost unheard of. And, I'm really proud of you that, that you do that. The other thing is Franklin County's always, past president of the Florida Association of County, Franklin County's always been very active in FAC. And, every year, at least one of you's been recognized. But, FAC is losing a strong, strong ally in Commissioner Sanders.
Oh, now, Welton.
Nah. And, she's always there. And, believe it or not, she always has an opinion.
Oh, my.
And, it's not very bashful with sharing it. But, she is gonna be missed on a state level. But, but Franklin County should be proud of yourselves, because you're always there when it comes to Home Rule. But, the reason I'm here is, as you know, I work with Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust, and it's that time of year again. And, we would just like the opportunity to quote your insurance. We don't deal in benefits, just purely workman's comp, property and casualty, automobile, everything else. And, we'd just like an opportunity to either quote it, help you with an RFP, whatever the process that you would choose. But, we'd sure like an opportunity to help you, help you maybe save some money and keep your current provider honest at the same time. So, that was my request. Thank you. Thank you. There being no further public comment, we'll move down the agenda. Sheriff A.J. Smith, discussion and approval.
Can we take a break?
You want to take a recess?
Yeah. Let's take a break.
We're gonna take five. The board will be recessed five minutes.